Next is ordinance 18-44, amend penalties for possession of marijuana adults. And does anyone register to speak to this?
Yes, Sean Kelderman, W2457 La Myra Drive, Brownsville.
Hi, thank you. Mayor Cummings, at the last meeting, you said that at one point, we needed to quit wasting time on this issue and get to more important things such as growing your community. I thought about that, and if I were a young person looking to relocate my family-
We're here to discuss the fine only.
I will get there.
You better get there quickly, this is why we're here.
I have five minutes, thank you, right? Okay, so if I were a young person looking to start a family, send my kids to school, pay my taxes here, buy my groceries here, the way you're treated and listen to your constituents would be something I pay attention to. Last time I checked, you had over 7,000 residents that asked you to reduce the fine to $25. As written, between $200 and $500, I don't even think changes from the current law. I don't think that respects the wishes of your citizens, nor do I think it shows that you hear them. And if I were looking to move, I would pay attention to that, and I think you should too. Thank you.
Pam?
Dan Ryland, 602 East Parkway.
Good evening. I'm back again. This is the fourth quarter, I think. Hopefully it is, huh? Just to remind you people that I've signed the petition twice, and I'm still supporting the idea of what the petitioner said, he reduced the fine to $25. I don't know of many issues that you have faced on the council where that many people have expressed their interest in anything. How many people expressed interest in Oshkosh Corp. new facility? I doubt 3,700 people. I mean, that's a lot of people. So democracy is supposed to respond to the wishes of the people, and I'm hoping tonight that you will do that. Go back to the petition they want, put it on the ballot. If you can't do it, then by ordinance, reduce it to $25. Thank you very much.
Martha Riesel, 530 Pyle Avenue. Our next speaker will be Mark Kelderman.
Actually Martha Reichel.
Sorry.
That's okay. I had a paper citing some things, and unfortunately, children distracted me before we left, so I'm winging it. We signed a petition for $25. Personal opinion aside, this should not be taken into consideration. What your citizens asked for should be. Mayor Cummings, your opinion on this matter shouldn't be affecting this. Fact should. It's 2018. Why are we still debating this? We know what this does, and you're destroying lives. You make it illegal and take an option that should be your citizens' option and say that that's not good enough for them. You are going to tell people that they're going to go to jail or pay an immense fine for something that is, we know is not harmful, and not listening to what your citizens have signed. A petition for $25 fine, not 200, not 300, not 125. There are cities in our state of Wisconsin that are doing the same thing. These are major cities because they recognize that their citizens are not criminals. They shouldn't be treated that way. And until legalization happens across the board, this is how we have to approach it at a city level. Because until we get the state on board, they're not going to be able to say it. We see it. We see it. No one, you know, we see it happening. Your citizens are asking for this. We're trying to make this happen across the state. You said, "Don't let this, you know, let's not shake the status quo." Yes, shake the status quo. This is how you make change. You start here, and you work your way up. You let your government know you're not happy. We all start by city by city, and the moment Wisconsin sees it, then Wisconsin will be another one of many that are to come. It's time to listen to what your citizens want. Thank you.
Mark Kelderman, W2457 La Myra Drive. Our next speaker will be Patty De-
Excuse me. Officer Harris, can you, is there clarification to the comments you made beforehand related to responses and decorum within the- Yes. Yeah, please. Thank you. You know, is that we talked about the related topics, citizen statements, call to order, and being considerate. One of the things is, is that, you know, the applause is nice, but we really don't need that. Let's respect the chambers that we're in. We're listening to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Not to be the devil's advocate here, but to me, I thought it was absolutely wonderful to see citizens that are engaged in their government and coming out enough to speak up on an issue. But noise aside, I appreciate all their appearances, and my heart just melts when I look in the faces of some of these people who were out there for hundreds of hours on cold nights in the rain. So when Mayor Cummings dismisses them lightly and calls them stupid or threatens people that they won't be allowed to speak because they don't conform their arguments around the groundwork that he's laid, I think it does a disservice to the 15% of the people that signed this petition to reduce the penalty for 25 grams or less first possession, simple possession, down to a $25 fine. I would hope that's what we can walk out of here with tonight. If not, we will take compromise. But, you know, I think you're fighting history here, and we're on the wrong side of history. And it's a shame that since the last year when we discussed this, another 129 residents in Oshkosh have a marijuana arrest on their record. And this may not stop that from happening, but this will tell people in Madison that the public wants some cannabis reform. Thank you.
Patricia Deener, 1316 Broad.
I come here this evening, I was listening to the last council meeting at home, and I liked the comments that Mr. Cummings gave, and I am not, I don't want the $25 fee lowered. I feel that it needs to be where it needs to be.
I have no one else registered for this ordinance.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved. Second discussion. Councilmember Crowsey.
I just wanted to voice my opinion again. The $200 proposal we have in front of us is, in my mind, out of line with other progressive cities in the state. And court costs aside, the person has to pay the bottom dollar on the ticket, so it should be comparable to those cities. Milwaukee, Madison, Neenah, La Crosse, Wausau, Stevens Point, all have under $200 fines with the fees. My two-tier proposal was rejected. It had support from three people up here, and possible other support too with a re-proposal of a different amount for a higher limit fine. So there was four people at least that supported a $50 fee, or $50 fine plus fees up to seven grams. So I look at it as, most people that smoke marijuana probably don't carry an ounce around all the time with them. I would think they would have, you know, three or four grams at the very most with them. So most of the people getting these fines are going to be charged a higher amount where people up here would have been okay originally with a $50 plus fees. So I want to make a motion to change the $200 fine to $150.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reduce the fine to, what did you say, 150?
Yes.
Discussion. Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments tonight actually come from an email that I received from Mayor Cummings stating that the financial burden should be placed on the criminal in this case. With that in my mind, and doing a little bit of research and going back on personal experiences, I just wanted to bring to your attention that by putting such a financial burden on somebody will actually bring more money out of your pockets. Somebody who is struggling financially with this will be put on probation, which costs anywhere from $20 to $60 a month. They will be put through an AODA assessment, which is $225. If that person, if that resident of your community cannot pay that, the county, Winnebago County, can fund that assessment at $225. If they need additional treatment, that can come out of the county's pocket as well. So now as a taxpayer of the county, you are funding this activity as well. In the process of financing such treatment, maybe it's discovered that this person is struggling elsewhere. Maybe they don't have health care. So then health care can be offered to you through Badger Care, which comes from the state of Wisconsin. And you are also a taxpayer to the state of Wisconsin. Now maybe it's also discovered at that time that you're behind on public service, Wisconsin Public Service, right? It's winter, it's cold, they can't shut it off, but maybe you're behind because you're trying to pay your fees, your fines. And guess what? On your public service bill, every month you are paying a low-income assistance fee. So now you're also helping pay that person's public service bill. So my point is, by making this fine as reasonable as possible, you're not only enabling somebody to learn their lesson and move on, but you're keeping a few more dollars in your pocket, Mayor Cummings. This isn't just a problem for somebody who is stupid enough to get caught, it also becomes your problem. Let's come together and solve it together. Listen to the people who've put their butts in motion for two years now and be done with it. Let's lower the fine. It's that simple. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Interesting points that were made recent, just a moment ago. Would the same apply to someone who is in arrears on a fine for operating while under the influence? Would the same apply for someone who is in arrears of, in other words, that they would have to, you know, that they could possibly be found with the Wisconsin Public Service? Would similar situations apply to people who are issued citations for other offenses?
I would assume.
So we're carving out a, an exception for one particular type of legal violation. Would that be correct?
A plant, yes.
Would that be, but, no, I'm not, no. The question is, in violation of a-
Well, we're talking about marijuana here.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Mr. Peck has the floor.
Is marijuana illegal in the state of Wisconsin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I just had a point to make again on this. There's a trend around the country for reducing fines to make it legal. Since our last meeting, two more states have made it completely legal. There's not any states looking at reducing drinking and driving because it's bad. They're looking at a progressive movement of lowering fines on marijuana because they're realizing it's not so bad. And that's the side I want to be on. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. And there are no lights lighting up. We're holding on reducing it from 200 to down to 150. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
No.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
No.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Lost 3-4.
So now it takes us to the original amendment, which is 1844, amend penalties for possession of marijuana slash adults. We need a motion and a second.
And it's already on the floor.
For the discussion, Councilmember Peck.
Mr. Herman, yeah. I'll defer to you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. I, you know, mostly, all of you know my background is law enforcement, 30 years. And I think there's a lot of misconception out in the community about how police go about doing their job and how they go about getting people with simple possession. First off, this is an ordinance, an ordinance violation, not a state statute violation, an ordinance violation. If you get arrested with a state statute, then jail time comes into play, probation comes into play, all those other things come into play. But if you get an ordinance to get in the city of Oshkosh, you pay a fine. That's it, a fine. And what is a fine? A fine is to say your behavior was against the law, there's a punitive side to it, and there's a hope that there's a change in behavior. That's what a fine's about. Right now, it's against the law. Maybe two weeks from now, Madison will take it up and they'll legalize it, and that's great. I don't, you know, and we aren't arguing whether it's medically okay, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I think there's some people thinking that our police department drives up and down neighborhoods, looking for people smoking marijuana in the streets, maybe, but they don't go in your house. What they want to do is cut the bad guy, the guy that is supplying it to our kids and supplying it to people that shouldn't have it because they're addicted to it. Just last week, for example, on the 18th, the Oshkosh Police Department Vice Narcotics Unit arrested a 27-year-old male, 27 block of Harrison, for multiple delivery of heroin. Now, that's a dangerous drug, very dangerous. A search warrant was executed. That's how they do it. It's a search warrant. They got into a house on Vine Avenue where they seized heroin, marijuana, drug paraphernalia, a handgun. All right? We had a murder in this city a couple weeks ago because of a bad drug deal going down south. We need to clean up our city. I know it's opiates, that's a whole different story too. But all-time death highs. It's still, if you go outside, if, even in the city of Oshkosh, you get stopped by a UWO police officer, it's going to be a state statute, non-ordinance. You get stopped by a state police, it's state statute, it's non-ordinance. So just remember that. Also, it's still illegal to drive under the influence of marijuana. It's a controlled substance at this point yet. 346631A says you cannot operate a motor vehicle over, under the influence of alcohol or controlled substance. Marijuana is still considered a controlled substance. We can't change that. Yes, we can change the fine, but does that really accomplish? You may think so. You're right. But it also leads to, you know, other illegal activity. It leads to other things. You may sit in your house and smoke your marijuana, and that's fine. You do whatever you would like to do in your own private residence. But I would be willing to bet that over 50% of all ordinance violations come because you committed another violation by driving maybe, and were driving too fast, or you went across the center line, or you went through a stop sign, or a stop light. You did something that created that traffic stop. Then you, the officer has a right to pat you down, and if you come across the other thing. The other violations are probably more important than the possession violation, so you get the ordinance. They don't go out looking for this stuff. Those that are, unless you order large amounts, and then the post office and neighbors and other people get concerned because of the amount of trafficking going in and out of the property, or a car driving up as you're buying your marijuana and things, that alerts them to that. That's why we have a vice narcotics squad because of these things. So we are reducing the fine from where it was. It was $325, so that's $125 difference. It's bringing the fine down from $547 to $389.50. So that's $157.50 difference. So we are addressing your issue to a point. I understand you want it to $25. But again, what is a fine? There's a punitive side, and there's a hope that there's an alternative behavior. It may not happen, obviously, especially if you believe in cannabis and believe what it all can do. But at this point, I can't support it below $200, the base fine, so I'll be voting in favor of $200. Thank you.
Councilman Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I applaud you for getting all the signatures that you did. It's part of our government system. Thing we have to remember is, yes, we have, we have a democracy, but it's a representative democracy. And that 50.1, just because you have 51.1% doesn't mean that that is how things are going to go. We see that, that that is why we have courts of law. That, there was a quote that was written in a Supreme Court case a few years ago, that our constitution is here to protect the weak minority from the arrogant majority. Your voice was heard. Mr. Kelderman talked about compromise. We are compromising. You can shake your head and say we're not, but the fact is, this is still illegal. We are not talking about other ordinance violations and changing the fines for those. Later on tonight, we'll be talking about changing our special events policy and how we assess those costs. I'll have comments related to that. But the fact is, this is still illegal in the state of Wisconsin. We're not talking about medicinal marijuana. We're talking about the laws that are on the books in this state. This is illegal behavior. I am willing to lower it to 200. It's a 31, it's a 31% reduction. But I will not, I cannot go down to make, to make something that is illegal basically equal to a parking ticket. And again, I applaud your efforts. Now, go down to where they need to be directed is in Madison and get the laws changed there. We're doing our part here right now.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one in which, you know, I've wanted to hear what the audience has had to say, and we went through this, obviously, last year, and then we're going through it now. You know, I wasn't overly impressed about a year ago, because I actually was one of the individuals that was approached to sign the petition. And I don't necessarily think it's the organization, it was the person who was, you know, passing along the clipboard for a signature. But in the manner in which they approached, you wouldn't have even known exactly what you were signing for. So I'm going on good faith that it was handled much differently this time than, say, a year ago. A little bit conflicted about how to vote today, because typically, if you have something that personally benefits, you typically recuse yourself from discussion and from a vote. You know, that's certainly not, obviously, something that's been taking place, so that's not something that allows me to be favorable for this. The other thing is, I was, I was anxious to see how the folks that showed up today would conduct themselves. And I could have been very easily swayed to go with Mr. Crowsey's suggestion of possibly going down to 150. But immediately, the personal attacks, whether you like the mayor, you agree with what he says, he obviously also represents constituents who feel as he does. So there's never any appropriate time to personally attack anybody, whether you're on the dais or whether you're in the audience. I don't think that was appropriate, I don't think it's fair. I wish today it would have been more about behavior, say, of Mr. Ryland, who's in the audience, who has an opinion, is very supportive of what the group is saying, but yet, while my, well, may not appreciate all of the comments, certainly conducts himself in a manner which is respectful. So I'll be honest, right now, I'm not 100% sure if I'm going to vote no completely, because I'm irritated by the process of how people have been treated, as well as concerns of area conflict of interest, or because I do believe in compromise and I do believe in listening to what constituents have to say, that perhaps I'll agree to the proposal of going to 200 for a fine.
Just one comment, and I direct this at Pam, and I believe when we took the oath of office, we swore to uphold the constitution, the laws of the state of Wisconsin, and so forth, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. I think I've been very, very upfront about my feeling of this whole thing since day one. I think anything we do to reduce and change an ordinance, which by doing so, in effect, we're condoning and even encouraging illegal behavior by reducing the fine for breaking the law, and that's what we're doing. We're giving you bonus points for breaking the law. We have laws in this country, there are consequences for breaking the law. It's, I think it's a very easy concept to understand. As long as this, there's a law in the state, we have an obligation to uphold that law. If you want change, change happens in Madison. Virtually everything we do is dictated by Madison. Councilmember Paul Mary.
Again, I want to thank those people that went out and just spent the time that they did participating in their local government. I was willing to support a reduction because I felt, to be honest, it kind of came in the middle. And because we don't have a municipal court that would enable that reduction in the court costs, it seemed like a reasonable place to be. With that said, I too am a little disappointed with the way in which some of the folks have conducted themselves. I was pleased to see some improvement over last year, but then it, it seemed to take, it went south, and just went south. But I will be supporting the $200, or the, the language as is, the 200, but not more than 500. And I believe Councilmember Herman indicated three, what was it, 389? 389, but that was including court costs. So just wanted to clarify that. 389 including court costs, and the five-
Oh, let me get it here.
If someone could help me out there.
Yep, just one second there, let me pull it back up.
So I just wanted to clarify-
The previous fine was 325, is the current forfeiture with a forfeiture with court cost of 547.
Right.
And at $200, the court, with court cost would be 389.50. So it's a reduction of $157.
So it's a reduction of $157.50.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Crowsey.
I just wanted to say that I'll be supporting the 200, obviously. It's progress. I mean, this year, we did a lot more than we did last year, and maybe next year and the year after, we'll do more, and maybe by then, the state will have it, you know, legal by then. But all we can do is the best we can do, and today is $200 plus court fees, so I'll be, I'll be supporting this.
All right. I see another Councilmember's want to speak. This is ordinance 1844, amend penalties for possession of marijuana, adults, to reduce the fine from 325 to $200. Would you, everyone's clear on that? Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Carried 6-1.